It's already the appointed time. This session will last from three forty to four fifty. We welcome the S E C D to answer members' questions on innovation and communications. Secretary, introduction from you please. Again, as members have got a speaking note, has got my speaking notes, I will just highlight the main points and the policy area of communication technology. On broadcasting, we will continue to promote the development of digital terrestrial television. Apart from handling applications for renewal of free TV program service licenses, the application for new licenses. We reserve funding in twenty fifteen sixteen for launching a new round of publicity for promotion of digital audio broadcasting. Review of control for the scene and indecent articles ordinance will be briefed the relevant panel when now drafting the relevant bill. Telecommunications. The frequency spectrum in the existing assignments of one nine eight point six megahertz of the frequency spectrum in the nine hundred megahertz and eighteen hundred megahertz bands will expire between November twenty twenty and September twenty one. We and the C A plan to make a decision on and announce the arrangements rating to reassignment before end of twenty seventeen. And the relevant preparatory work has been kick-started. We also set up a new team for periods of three years to review the broadcasting ordinance and the telecommunications ordinance. We will brief the panel on broadcasting and information technology later. And then we'll see the funding approval from the F C. On P two P tele-marketing course, we have commissioned a consultancy to conduct a survey in order to solicit the views of various sectors of the community on the regulation of P two P Q course. It will again report to the panel later. And we will inject an additional four hundred million dollars into the Create Smart Initiative. And the review is expected to be completed in the middle of this year and we will report to the council in due course. Some of the initiatives to promote the development of the fashion design sector mentioned in the budget speech will also be funded by the C S I. On the film industry, the government will continue to encourage more film productions and nurture talents through the Film Development Fund and we will introduce a new fund production grant scheme and enhance the film production financing scheme. We will also relaunch the first feature film initiative in twenty fifteen. We intend to inject another two hundred million dollars into the Film Development Fund. This year's policy address proposed to inject five billion dollars into the Innovation and Technology Fund and subsume the research and development cash rebate scheme under the I T F. Funding of the proposal was approved by the F C earlier. I thank members for their support. To enhance the funding support for technology companies in Hong Kong and to encourage more private sector investment in research and development activities, we launched a new enterprise support scheme in March this year to replace this more entrepreneur research assistance program. The new scheme supports R and D conducted by companies of all sizes. And the funding ceiling for each approved project has been increased from six million to ten million dollars. And there is no recoupment requirement. This is a major improvement from our previous scheme. And the F S has announced in the budget that the Hong Kong Science and Technology Parks Corporation will establish a corporate venture fund. The corporation has reserved fifty million dollars from its resources and is drafting the details for the establishment of the fund. On hardware support, phase three development of the science park is progressing on schedule. Its first three buildings were opened in September last year, while the remaining two buildings will be completed in twenty sixteen. On nurturing I T manpower, we propose to spend seventy five million dollars on a two-pronged enrich I T program from twenty fifteen sixteen school year to twenty twenty two twenty three school year. And we expect that the enriched I T class will commence its schedule in the new school year starting September this year. Release of public sector information. Another important task is to make available all government information released online in digital formats by government bureau and departments from this year onwards. And we have revamped the P S I portal data dot gap dot Hong Kong I T B. To one time being spent on possible arguments over certain technical legal issues, we will submit a fresh resolution for the transfer of relevant statutory functions and repeal the original resolution that was approved by Legco on the twenty ninth of October last year. After the draft estimates for twenty fifteen and sixteen are passed through the appropriation bill, twenty fifteen, we will submit another funding proposal. We really hope that members can support the I T B and stop filibustering the funding proposal. My colleagues and I are ready to answer questions from members.
I've now eight members registered. Mister Xin Chung Kai, Mister Ma Feng Kwok, Mister Charles Mark, Mister Wong Yook Man, Mister Chen Chi Chin, Mister Chan Yun, Mister Chan Yun Heng, Mister Sit Ho and Mister Wu Che Wah. Four minutes each. Mister Xin Chung Kai. Mister Chairman, I'd like to follow up on reply zero five two in relation to licensing matters. I would like to follow up on a number of licenses. Fantasy TV. There's one of them. In October twenty thirteen, well, I'm on the free TV licenses for Fantastic TV and H K T E C. Well, in your reply, you say that you announced the outcome after the C E in council has made his final determination. Two odd months have elapsed. It seems that the progress has been slow. You spent two to three years on licensing and in October twenty thirteen, you decided to grant approvals in principle to the applications. But now, members of the public don't know when they'll actually be able to see, to watch TV programs for these two free TV licensees. And in recent times, we've been hearing a great deal of news about one TV station in relation to the pay, the payment of salaries and wages to a staff. Now, there are these two licenses that have been granted approval in principle. So I'd like to know when we'll have a formal answer. Or to be more specific, when do members of the public have TV programs to watch from these two new entrants? So, one topic is about renewal. The Communications Authority, the C A, submitted its recommendations to the C E in council in November last year. The C E in council has to observe certain procedures. Once there's a decision, the C E in council will make an announcement. As regards Mister Ricky Wong's company and his application, it is still being handled by the C A. There's no recommendation to the C E in council yet. As far as I know, the C A repeatedly asked for information from the company concerned and that's still underway. What about the remaining two? Fantastic Television Limited, that is Cable TV, and then H K Television Entertainment Company, Cable. On the fifteenth of October twenty thirteen, approvals in principle were granted. Yes, that's in the reply. I would like to know when members of the public will be able to see TV programs from these two new licensees. On the nineteenth of January, recommendations were made to the C E in council, which is still studying. The cases were actually only two odd months have passed since then. We need to spend time on the necessary procedures. Mister Ma Feng Kwok, originally, I'd like to ask about reply zero three nine with three parts. The first two parts are basically the same as what Mister Xin Chung Kai asked. As for the third part, the government did not answer my question. That is about the development of independent TV program production. I asked whether anything had been done, if not, the reason. So I'd like to know the attitude of the government. And then I'd like to follow up on reply zero four one. Digital broadcasting. There been no viewing rate survey. As I asked, how do you know the situation of digital broadcasting? How are you trying to make it more popular? As we already have an operator, the government should try to understand the situation. Now, this has been in place for several years. Why don't you conduct a viewing survey? I think our position is very clear. We encourage TV stations to make more use of these company which produce independent programs so as to nurture more talents in terms of creative industries. We did have certain achievements. Well, after the approval in principle is given, the government will discuss with the applicant concerned the licensing conditions for the business license. As for regulation of locally produced programs, members of the public do have views and the C A will also make a recommendation to the C E in council, which will finally decide on whether or not a license should be granted. What about the survey on viewing rate on digital broadcasting, digital audio broadcasting, D A B? For D A B, we've not carried out any survey on the listenership. We've not yet formed a consensus. Anyway, the government very much supports D A B. In the past, we allocate a great deal of resources to D A B in terms of transmission stations and telly and so forth. So we worked on the infrastructure and then we also worked on the horsepower involved in order to allow more members of the public to be able to receive D A B. So why don't you carry out a listenership survey? Well, he didn't say he's not going to do that. They're discussing the matter. In terms of licensing, can they have more licensing conditions to require the operator to procure more locally produced programs? Well, Chairman, we encourage the TV stations to do so. But how rigid licensing conditions should be, we need to study that. May I follow up on reply zero four three? Fortunately, the secretary comes today. Yesterday, there were two pieces of new news related to I A T V. Were then on A T V, but suddenly somebody said that we had to support A T V. And then in the evening, we heard that by Tuesday, a decision has to be made on whether or not A T V should terminate its business. We also heard that the new license might be auctioned or the spectrum could be auctioned to the two companies mentioned just now by Mister Xin Chung Kai. Well, the former is related to my question in relation to follow-up work, arrangement, et cetera. The latter involves more procedures and legal issues. Everybody will ask, on what basis should they be granted the spectrum? Because they promised the use of optic fibers by entering the households. I think the secretary should clarify whether these rumors were true. Tomorrow is Tuesday, where decision be made. And if the spectrum of frequencies is to be given to the two new licensees, even though they've not started broadcasting yet, if that is the case, what is the rationale behind that? If not, what possibilities do we have? Secretary, I note that in recent times, there are quite some hearsay. And as I said, when the C A works, it has to observe the law as well as established procedures. So I won't comment on these hearsay. If you take hearsay to be facts, then you might have heard a lot of facts. But fact is fact, hearsay is hearsay. The government has to observe established procedures. Do we have to do something tomorrow? For license renewal, according to the law, that's the business of the C E in council. You know that in the past, Exco meetings are confidential. They contents are not to be disclosed. Once there's a result, I'll try to make an announcement as soon as possible. Will it be next week? I can't give an answer. I can only say that the C E in council will proceed as quickly as possible and to take care of all procedures, including procedural justice. Well, Secretary, are we going to know the answer tomorrow? I just want to know whether the frequencies will be given to the two new licensees. In legal terms, can you comment on whether that's a possibility? I'd like to thank Mister Mark for his question. As for the allocation of frequencies and bandwidths, that's not for the Exco to decide, it's for the C A to decide. And the C A is an independent body, so I won't comment on that. Mister Chairman, in other words, if it is decided that A T V won't get a renewal, then they have to decide on whether there should be a retendering exercise and how to allocate the frequencies. Well, there's no question of retendering, but we have to decide how to distribute the spectrum of bandwidths and frequencies. Mister Wong Yook Man, originally, I did not intend to ask this question, but just now I heard about the A T V and I heard that tomorrow's fate is to be determined. This is absurd. Well, starting from twenty oh two, they discussed renewal. And then starting from the first of December twenty oh three, up to the thirtieth of November, this year. Now is April twenty fifteen. The license will expire by the thirtieth of November twenty fifteen in seven months' time. This is unprecedented in our history. But then, you treated that as nothing. What will happen? Whether or not A T V is to get its renewal, it will be a problem. In history, we've never had such a renewal exercise. A T V staff are just waiting to be paid. They're selling their properties, their dramas, et cetera. The major investor has become the major creditor. I don't think the C A can solve the problem. The C A is a regulator. The matter is in the hands of the Exco and C Y Leng. C Y Leng has no conscience, only seven more months to go. In history, this is unprecedented, be it in the era of the B A or the C A. Nothing like this has happened. The C A has already finished its work. It has already recommended to the C E in council that there should not be a renewal for A T V. But there's no decision yet. Why? You're waiting for somebody to rescue A T V. Wang Zhang has become the creditor as because the shareholders are not going to invest anymore. In the past, in the era of Lam Ba Yan, he invested a great deal into A T V and then shareholding changed many times. Investors continue to invest into the company and you treated this as nothing. You only say that, oh, you're not going to get your license if you don't pay your staff. Originally, they got a year to maneuver.
But there's only seven months left. You're supposed to tell them one year before the expiry on whether you're going to renew their license. But it is now April. Even if you announce tomorrow whether the license is to be renewed or not, you have stored for a few months. This is the government's responsibility. Of course, you will see here that C E's, I mean, the Exco's agenda is confidential. You don't know whether they're going to discuss it. But anyway, the radio, I mean, the TV station is in trouble. And the two remaining licensees, they have not done a bit. Are they waiting for the spectrum from A T V to be distributed to them? You issued two more licenses to offer more choices and they haven't done any preparation work. And I A T V is not doing anything. So instead of four, we've only got one radio, one TV station. What kind of government is this? I've spent four minutes to let people watching this broadcasting. How outrageous the government is.
Chairman, I've no time to answer. It doesn't matter, Secretary. You just answer my questions.
Well, I do, I'm very concerned about this subject on behalf of of the people of Hong Kong. I'm very concerned about the licensing, the license issues of of licenses. Well, we asked what kind of a TV station is? The employees are creditors and yet they are asked to take out loans from the shareholders. This is so ridiculous. I must criticize Matthew Jung. He must defend the rights of workers to get paid for their work. No, I don't know what A T V is doing. I don't know what is behind their C N M management. I understand that some employees still want their jobs. You can just issue a new license. We must have one more license, one more TV station. True, young people can have access to TV programs. It was such a successful TV station and now it has come to this stage. And the government has been assessing the situation for so long. And I think the government is being led by the station. This Wang Zhang, you don't know what he's doing. So the government is very stupid. You're being led by the station. This is what the community feel. So either you cancel its license or you ask another, you allow competition so that there can be some fatality. So I ask this question on behalf of many people in Hong Kong. This station that owe employees pay and using all sorts of threats and intimidation. I think if you issue a new license, it does not result to such tricks.
Secretary, thank you, Miss Chen, for your question. It's not that the government has stalled. The government has really not stalled. Under the legislation, the B A has to consult the public and analyze the views and make a recommendation to Exco. It was submitted to Exco on the fourth of November last year. And after Exco has received the recommendation, it has to go through many procedures before coming to a decision. It has to ensure procedural justice and consult secret advice. Now, I don't want to interrupt you, but I must interrupt you. I think you have spent ample time on procedural justice. No, 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 procedural justice takes time. We can only come to a decision after we've followed due procedures. And then, by then, you'll be able to know the decision of Exco. So what I want to say is, Exco has not stalled. It understands that it is a subject close to the heart of the community. And our position has been very clear. We open the market up to different stakeholders to make recommendations according to our rules and regulations. Mister Chen Chi Chin, I'd like to follow up on my own question. Reply one three oh. The cost-effectiveness of the government in developing its own mobile apps. I asked a similar question last year. Many government departments have developed mobile apps trying to be trendy. However, the download rate is so low for some of the apps. If you look at the cost, some of them are very expensive. Some of the apps have got only a downloading rate of ten. It was only downloaded ten times. Last year, it was F C D. This year, it is a progress seven hundred. And for some of the apps, two hundred twenty odd. I think government departments should at least ask their friends and relatives, neighbors and colleagues to download the apps so that it won't look so ugly. This year, some is as much as two hundred dollars per download. Water Services Department, for instance, it spent one point five six million dollars to develop an app, seven thousand odd downloads. And each download costs over two hundred dollars. So, I'd like to know whether our guidelines for developing some ads or is it just when the department head feels like it, he can do it? Would the G C I O advise him against doing so? And to tell the department to consider cost-effectiveness? I'd like to know whether any assessment or monitor is done after an app is developed. I'd like to focus on C M A B. It has got a mobile app on Basic Law, four thousand downloads and each download costs two hundred dollars. I'm sure after five minutes, you will want to remove it, remove the app. It's a waste of money and time. So, we have plenty of them. And according to N X B, because people do not understand Basic Law well enough, there will be another app developed. And there is no quotation here. It says depending on the quotation. I'd like to know what is the rough budget. Okay, that Basic Law Genie app is a failure and you want to do another one. You may have to spend another ten million dollars on that.
Thank you. Yes, the G C I O assists.
Yes, the G C I O assists government departments to promote the use and development of mobile apps. We have a number of measures. First, we will improve the guidelines and we will add checklists so that departments can understand things to note, whether the app is valuable for money. And we've also organized a sharing sessions to let different departments understand what is needed. We have also got a template for the information of government departments to reduce the cost of apps development of individual departments. We've also launched a platform. So that government departments, well, only just one sentence. G C I O, have you ever advised a department against developing such an app? Miss Hau.
The government has not followed procedural justice when it comes to the issuing of a new free TV license. It should have followed the recommendation of B A. However, the recommendation was vetoed by that man. So we have such a, we're in such a bad state. So in terms of TV production, also the two free TV stations. Now, one is not paying its staff at all. From employees' point of view, the Labor Department, of course, the Labor Party, of course, finds it desirable. It is also not good for our, for the development of our creative industries. So why don't you act decisively and cancel the license and give it to someone who is committed and ambitious enough to do it? We have to act according to the relevant ordinance and the procedures. In license renewal and also issuance, well, the two organizations that have been granted free licenses are being processed by the Exco. And for the license renewal issue, a recommendation has been made to the Exco for it to consider. I hope the executive will not drag his feet anymore and settle the matter A S A P. Now, Film Development Fund, I am all for investing more money to promote the development of our movie industry because we have got a few local productions, sort of, well, one acclaim from different sectors of the community. But why have you decided to inject an additional twenty, two hundred million dollars in the Film Development Fund without seeking Legco's approval?
Miss Am Li Lau's question and your reply O three O. Give us all the information. The production cost cap will be increased from fifty million to twenty million dollars. And if the production cost is no more than ten billion dollars, you will increase the funding ceiling to two million dollars. Why have you bypassed Legco? These are supposed to be good for our movie industry. However, you have not followed procedural justice. And therefore, we're going to take this out from the draft estimates so that we can speak on it in the relevant Legco debate. So can you tell us why you've decided to take these two hundred million dollars out to bypass Legco's scrutiny?
But we have briefed the I T and Broadcasting Panel with member support. So we have certainly not circumvented Legco. But you are not submitting a proposal to the F C U, which has a statutory role to play. Of course, we can discuss such issues, but I must say that we have considerable discussion in the relevant panel with member support. In the past, there were many items with the support of relevant panel and yet they follow the usual procedures and sought the approval of F C. Why have you decided to bypass Legco this time? So far, I've not heard any objection to our increasing subsidy or support for the film industry. Mr. Wu Chi Hua, many people are not happy with the performance of A T V because the administration has not announced its decision on the license renewal of A T V. It appears that the administration is waiting for a white knight so that it can negate the decision of the B A depending on who the white knight is.
I would like to ask, if this is to be your practice, how will this be applied to A T V's renewal application? Mister, Miss Marie Tam asked us to take care of A T V, et cetera, et cetera. Now, this renewal issue is actually under a B A report to the C E in council, but that was shelved. Is it that you're waiting for the white knight and it depends on who that white knight is? And then a question for Secretary yourself. Well, Secretary, I sympathize with you. There were changes to innovation and technology. And for broadcasting, under this branch, you vetted the B A report, but the Exco has shelved this for quite some time. Should you not have a timetable on this? Will the B A submitted a report to you? You pass the report to the C E in council, but there must be a timeframe for them to finish their work. Otherwise, the investor has invested, has applied, but does not know when he can start work. So this is not what society should do if it wants to create an investor-friendly atmosphere. Now, if there is or is not a white knight, what will happen? Well, the C A has completed its work. If a white knight emerges, well, let's not talk about renewal. If there's any change to shareholding, an approval has to be sought from the C A. If there is a white knight and the C A has new views about the licensee, such new views can be submitted to the C E in council for consideration. But this has not happened. You mean the white knight has to reapply? No. In law, the C A has completed its work. If something new emerges and the C A wants to submit new views to the Exco, that's possible. If the Exco wants to seek more views from the C A, it can also do so. So this is clear. In fact, I don't think I'm really suffering. I don't think I'm suffering. Well, the C A studied the relevant laws and make recommendations to the C E in council. And we are here to provide technical support and assistance to the Exco. That's my job. Miss Am Li Lau. Mister Chairman, I'd like to ask the Secretary something about Hong Kong's broadcasting policy. Under the one country, two systems concept, is this something for Hong Kong? Why said that N P C deputies, when attending N P C meetings in Beijing, said that Asia TV should receive support and assistance? Does that give people the feeling that there's no more one country, two systems? Why said that Hong Kong people would like to bring Hong Kong matters to Beijing to invite Beijing's intervention? If they want to say anything, say here. Well, in particular, for a business establishment, what's meant by support? Is it that the Exco shouldn't do something to help them? Well, Secretary, you're responsible for broadcasting policies. After hearing such noises or voices, should you stop them? Should you not stop them, be it in the C A or in the Exco? When they vet license applications or license renewal applications, they will follow established procedures. I won't comment on other people's views. I've read newspaper reports. Well, I don't want to comment on the term support. We have to follow the law. We have to follow procedures. That's not affected. Mister Chairman, my question is, some Hong Kong people who are N P C deputies have brought internal matters of Hong Kong to Beijing. That gives people the impression that Beijing was invited to interfere with internal affairs. So there's no more one country, two systems. You can't say that you don't want to comment. You are the responsible official under the accountability system. And now the Basic Law has been promulgated for twenty-five years. This is something very solemn. So you're not going to do anything about that? I'll follow established procedures and systems. That's not affected. The system itself is sound. But people went to Beijing to make those comments. We don't know whether or not later some Beijing officials are to come out to say something. Now, these people, when they go to Beijing, they should talk about mainland affairs. Broadcasting is Hong Kong's internal matter. Why is it necessary to bring it to Beijing? Because it's a serious late damage, the one country, two systems concept. Well, that's very difficult to answer. There's no difficulty to answer that question. The S A R G should consider that these people shouldn't go to Beijing to do something to damage one country, two systems. Secretary, we follow the books, the procedures and rules. I won't comment on other people's remarks. Miss Lau asked whether I should talk to these people. Well, she has expanded my portfolio. Should I not follow my own procedures, Hong Kong's own laws in handling matters? Mister Chairman, every official, every Hong Kong person is duty bound to safeguard one country, two systems. If these people openly challenge one country, two systems, whoever in the appropriate post should voice out. Otherwise, more people will go to Beijing to say that Gregory So should be responsible for this and that and you'll be very busy. You have to entertain these people. Miss Claudia Mo. Mister Chairman, the A T V issue is really appalling. Just a few days ago, the major investor, Wang Zheng, came out to say that A T V could not survive the last day of this month. Today is the thirtieth, tomorrow is the last day of this month. If there are such scaring remarks to scare A T V staff as the Secretary for Commerce and Economic Development should not come out to say something, A T V does not belong to you, but you are the regulator. That's my first question. As for my second question, up to this moment, will you say that the A T V licensee is still a fit and proper person to operate a TV station? My third question is, you're responsible for the broadcasting policy. As for government's A P I's, announcement of public interest, it continuously asks us to seize the opportunity in twenty seventeen. Well, the C A is under you. We're told that is the Information Services Department that produce A P I's. That's under Home Affairs, I think. But they've used taxpayers' money to produce government's brainwashing advertisements. Is this not, or do you feel that this is a blow to Hong Kong's broadcasting policy? Secretary, there are three questions. I can't remember them clearly. What's your first question? Well, if any major TV investor is to come out and say that a certain TV station is to collapse, then it will be very scaring for the staff. Should the C A or your bureau come out to say something? All along, the C A has reflected this to the relevant body and remind them of the licensing conditions and their services. As for the term fit and proper person, the C A has not said that they're not a proper, a fit and proper person. Well, the A T V is applying for a renewal at the moment. The C A has made recommendations to the Exco. And once a decision is made by the Exco, there'll be an announcement. All right, let me follow up on this. As the Bureau Director, you're responsible for this big portfolio. According to you, is the A T V licensee still a fit and proper person? Secretary, if Miss Mo is referring to Mister Wang Zheng? No, I'm not. I'm not referring to Wang Zheng, the existing licensee, the existing licensee. Chairman, the existing licensee still holds the license at the moment. If the C A is of the view that the license should be suspended or revoked, then under the law, there is a mechanism to do so. Thank you, Chairman. The third question is about, is about brainwashing. I don't think that's brainwashing. The government must have an avenue to publicize as measures and policies to the public. So there is such a need, Chairman. Does any other colleague wish to ask questions? We've finished the first round. Mister, I've got him, four minutes. Thank you, Chairman. Well, Secretary, I refer to your speaking notes in relation to digital audio broadcasting. Well, D A B is used by quite many radio stations at the moment. How will you improve on the so-called blind spots? That is, broadcasting won't be interrupted? Occasionally, should you not head towards that direction? That's the first question. Secondly, concerning the Innovation and Technology Bureau, I T B. You just said that you would like members to stop filibustering. We heard a lot of voices from the public in support of the I T B. The public wants us to generate more jobs in the creative industries. That's very obvious. And just very recently, there's a newspaper report about a young person who has invented a method to test for cancer by way of a quick test. If the worst comes to the worst, well, under the leadership of Professor Young, can something be done? I understand that you have a backup measure. So what can you do? Well, concerning D A B, the three licenses and R T H K have installations on three mountains. have installations on three mountains. Their installations have covered most parts of Hong Kong. But due to topography as well as indoor obstacles for transmission, the operators are duty bound to ensure smooth transmission. I believe they're now enhancing the functions of these transmission stations. Any support for them?
Uh, we offered a lot of support in the past. For instance, in the form of promotion and antennae inside tunnels. They were government-funded in construction so that motorists could have access to information. And when it comes to the power, well, we will do what we can to improve signaling, signal reception. The ITB has failed to be, to be set up. And we have Chairman of the String Committee, Professor Yang. And it will consider new strategies in the light of the development of the industry. It's just a short-term measure pending the establishment of ITB.
Miss Sari Lee, yes, I'd like to follow up on the issue of ITB. We talked about being a good role model. So I think the government should take the lead in its communication with the public. It's true that in the past, the public like to use a new media to express their views. So have you conducted a review within the government to see what innovative technology will you use to communicate with the public? Secretary, regarding contact with the public, using various means. Well, our G I S has used social media. But I don't think this is really under my portfolio when it comes to technological development. For instance, the use of apps, the G C I O has cooperated with the industry in development of this area. But pending setting up establishment of the ITB, you are still responsible for innovation and technology. And of course, we should promote innovative technology in society. And the government should take the lead. Since you are the head of this bureau, we have to see whether innovation and technology has increased within the government and whether you are using new, using a new technology and innovation in communicating with the public. While this is the role of the G I S, but has the government taken the lead? Well, I have personally, I have Facebook to communicate with the public. Let's see if Mister Victor Lem has anything to add. Well, you should reconsider this issue. I think using Facebook is still a far cry from using innovation and technology. I think he would like to see innovation and technology cut from his bureau so that he can wash his hands free of it. Mister Lem.
The government has made use of various channels, including new media to communicate with the public. Government departments are using new media widely, such as Facebook, Twitter. And we also have specific consultation channels. And we also use new media to communicate with the public. The G C I O provides supports to government departments and to promote public engagement in digital, by digital means. We will continue to make good use of new media. Whether you are using Twitter or Facebook is rather superficial.
Do you have any regular checks? Do you conduct regular checks on government departments to see how the application of new media can be enhanced? And have you made reference to what other countries are doing? And I think the government should take the lead to promote such things. Mister Lem.
Uh, we have run a number of seminars and sharing sessions with different departments so that they have the knowledge and expertise to promote the use of new media in a most cost-effective manner.
Mister Yu Si Ling, question oh seven one. In many rural areas in the NT, there is no broadband coverage.
According to the administration, it is purely a commercial decision. And it is for the operator himself to decide whether a broadband service should be provided. Now, when it comes to a fixed line, it's okay because nowadays people have mobile phones. But for broadband service, it is more or less a necessity. If you continue to allow the operators to decide. Well, Hong Kong is such busy city and our living environment is so dense. I don't think this is the right attitude. I think you should have certain targets. For instance, there should at least be fixed line broadband coverage once the population has reached a certain level. The operators have also got this duty. Since they are, they have made so much money, they should have a timetable so that members of the public can know when they can be covered. So you should discuss with fixed network operators. When they, when their licenses are due for renewal or if they apply for new licenses, you should discuss with them and set some targets so that we can have a higher coverage of fixed broadband services.
Miss Ho. Well, for the provision of fixed broadband services, we allow market forces to, to apply. So it depends on demand in the market. And we will also promote communication dialogue between the residents and the operators. And I think mobile network is an alternative to fixed broadband services. While the two are not exactly alike, but a mobile network can, can supply quite extensive area. No, this attitude is not right. I think this is more or less a necessity. If you ask residents to use other types of services, of course, that's possible. But costs will be much higher. I think the government should exert pressure on FNOs. Now, if you just allow them to make profits without giving them any pressure is no good. So in future negotiations, can there be some understanding between the government and FNOs?
Well, I don't think that FNO is a necessity yet. And our fixed broadband network is certainly no inferior to other places. But we will note, but we note to members' views and will bear this in mind in our future considerations.
Mister Yu, Wi-Fi, can the government consider setting a certain target year in by which all government departments will offer free Wi-Fi? Mister Lem. In places where the public frequently go to, we have already got a free Wi-Fi. I think he's talking about government departments. We have to consider cost effectiveness. If the place is not frequently visited by the public, then it's not cost effective.
Mister Long Kwong. I think reading Mister So's speaking notes are so infuriating. All right, you have spent five billion dollars or you have injected five billion dollars into the Innovation Technology Fund. And you are going to increase the funding support for technology companies in Hong Kong. And the funding ceiling will be increased from six million to ten million dollars. There is no recruitment requirement. This is ridiculous. You said that since it was not possible, it was not always easy to recover the grant. Then you would just write off the loan. And you talked about matching grant. Now, do you have any sense of shame? I asked you last time which private sector company would do this? Now, if the AA adopts this approach, it would be excellent. Now, if the banker is willing to give him one dollar, for instance, then the AA will have to pay seventy billion dollars less. And this app, Basic Law Genie. Now, Mister So, you talked about Facebook. My, my Facebook is have so many visits and many likes. I never borrowed any money from you. So you're not willing to spend money wisely. So, Mister So, let me give you some tips. In your apps, you should include the following. First, D seven, six, eight, nine. And then you will have so many, so many views. And then you'll have something about Lung Chai Yan leaving home, the story of Lung Chai Yan leaving home. And then another thing is a photo taken at Hyde Park. And whether the CE has approved the AA's three R S. Well, he didn't even completed the Exco meeting. He left Exco halfway to reach home, to drive the ambulance away. You have to make your apps interesting. Why are there so many views in my Facebook? Well, I declare that Mister Chang Chi Chin is going to give me a million dollars. Are you going to give me the same amount of money? Of course not. This is really very corrupt. Now, Mister Chairman, if you run a business, will you do this? So if somebody give your waiter one dollar, will you give him another dollar? Will you? Of course not. Well, sometimes I do, we do offer bonus or reward. Really, then I, I will go to, I will patronize your restaurant. All right, all right, you should include in your Facebook the story of Chai Yan running away from home. Mister Tam Yu Chong, I'd like to ask a question on tourism. Well, tourism was for the last session. This is on information technology. Oh, good. Of course, we know the IT Bureau is not yet set up. And instead, you have a consultant. Can something be done? In preparation so that as soon as the IT Bureau is set up, it can start its work as soon as possible so as to avoid possible challenges. Was this question asked? If not, can you please?
Miss Wong. Thank you, Chairman. In March, the CE appointed Professor Yang as the consultant in Exco. He'll chair the committee. He'll study the ecology of Hong Kong's innovation and technology. At this moment, at the doorstep of our motherland, what opportunities do we have? What strengths do we have? What constraints are we subject to? So we have to collect views. So we'll make good preparation for that. Mister Tam Yu Chong, any follow up? No? We have five minutes left. Four colleagues would like to speak for a second time. Mister Michael Ten, you're looking at me? You want to press the button? All right, you have pressed your button. All right, one minute per member, including questions and answers. Mister Sin Chung Kai. Thank you, Chairman. Well, a new bureau will have to be established. And thus to be taken out of your bureau. Somebody said that you did not perform well. Well, in fact, under you, licensing and renewal have been slow for new licenses. You spent at least three years on that. In principle, even if approval in principle has been obtained, eighteen months have elapsed before we see anything. So is the problem in you, in Hong Kong's system, or what? Broadcasting is not rocket science. Why is it that you've been spending so many years on this? And you have to know that we're not talking about more licenses. Two TV stations are to become one. Mister Chang Chi Chin, I'd like to ask about the figure. The C M A B will have a new application, any ceiling for its budget. And then for O G C I O, have they ever told you that your idea will not work? Have you been asked to, not to spend so much money? Well, we haven't got the quotation yet. It depends on the quotation, as in the reply. As for cost effectiveness, it depends on the objective purpose as well as target group of the application concerned. To assess the cost effectiveness, the number of visitors may not be a very accurate basis. Maybe there's only one uploading, but a lot of viewings. Mister Wu Chi Wei. The CE in council, after receiving a report from the BA or CA, a decision should be made as quickly as possible. A report was submitted to the Exco on the fourth of November. But then on the twentieth of November, Mister Lam Wan Kwong spoke on an open occasion that he had not received the information. Well, over two months have elapsed. But no information passed to the Exco convenor on this ATV issue. Is that against the guidelines? That is, a decision should be made as quickly as possible. Well, the report was for the Exco. But then the Exco convenor said that he had not received the information. Well, that's a report directly from the CA to the Exco. So much for this meeting. Tomorrow's meeting will start at two P M.